Good evening. I'm John Wensky, Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, October 9th, 2024. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco channels 29 and 329 and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connection's website. Thank you to Shrewsbury Media Connection and Liz Poplowski for their assistance with this broadcast. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on SMC's website and their YouTube channel between now and our next scheduled meeting on Wednesday, October 23rd. First item on our agenda is public participation. Tonight, we have not received any requests to speak. However, public participation is available to any and all residents that wish to address the committee regarding concerns pertaining to policy, budget, and the performance of the superintendent. In the future, if anybody wishes to speak at public participation, they should contact the chairperson in advance of the next scheduled meeting. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, Chairperson and members reports. Colleagues, anything to report?
Yes.
Ms. Shreeboor.
Last night, a few of us were able to join a Zoom meeting that was hosted by the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools about financial challenges that are faced by minimum aid districts in Massachusetts. And there is a number of districts in the state that only receive the yearly minimum per pupil increases from the state, which places more of a financial burden for the education budget on the individual municipalities. So, the formula for what is given from the state to the municipalities is old, and it could use some tweaks to better serve schools and students and the taxpayers. So there's more to come from this. This is a bigger conversation statewide, but I think it's important for us as a committee to attend sessions like this so that we can adequately plan for our budgets here in Shrewsbury. So, it was a good Zoom. I learned a lot from it, and I'm looking forward to the conversation that follows that.
Thank you so much. Ms. Heffernan.
Yeah, Mr. Wensky, thank you very much. I do just want to thank all of our staff and faculty for some very successful series of curriculum nights. I'm realizing that the high school curriculum night was a day after our last meeting, and it is the first time in my family we have had to do a divide and conquer to make it through the halls and to all of the classes, and just really appreciate how much material can get covered in 12 minutes by our staff about what they're going to do all year long, but appreciate the time and energy. We were certainly at the Sherwood one for my family a few weeks prior. Recognize that's a lot of time and effort, but how important it is for families to kind of learn and hear more about what's happening in our building. So, wanted to share my appreciation.
Great. Thank you. So much. I'd like to provide an update to the public regarding our ongoing negotiations with the Shrewsbury Professionals Association. We did have our 17th meeting with SPA since negotiations began on January 22nd. That meeting was this past Monday. Our discussions continue to be productive, and we are making progress towards reaching an agreement on this negotiation. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 21st, and we look forward to continued progress. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Superintendent Shreeboor. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. Ms. Heffernan stole my thunder a bit because I was going to recognize curriculum nights and all the things she said I certainly agree with. Also wanted to mention that at the elementary level, they took a little different approach this year and made some changes. We just hadn't had the attendance that we wanted from families the last couple of years post-COVID, and shifted to more of an open house type of approach where the students came with their families, went around the schools, scavenger hunts, met all the different teachers in addition to their classroom teachers, the special subjects teachers as well, and it was a big hit. Feedback so far has been very positive from families as well as in our schools, among our educators and our principals, and I want to thank, anytime you make a change, it takes different kinds of planning and work to work through those pieces, and I was very pleased to hear the positive results. I happened to be visiting Spring Street School that morning of their open house for the elementary level, and the students were very excited, putting together all the things they were going to show their families when they came that evening, and that piece was a little different this year, but I think it was a very positive evolution of that evening. And at the middle in the high schools, as Ms. Heffernan referenced, again, at all levels, the preparation our educators have to do, and then the time that our families took to come and attend, we really greatly appreciate that. So, again, kudos to our educators as well as our parents and caretakers for making them a success this year. And that is Superintendent's report this evening.
Great. Thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is a timed scheduled appointment into student recognition for Superintendent Awards. We have several students and their families here in the audience along with some administrators. So, without further ado, have Dr. Sawyer kind of walk us through introductions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Pardon me. I have the pleasure this evening of honoring four different students who are seniors at Shrewsbury High School in the class of 2025. This is an annual event that we have here at School Committee. There are two different awards that we'll be giving out this evening. The first is known as the Academic Growth and Student Leadership and Learning Award that comes through the National School Development Council and through its local affiliate that we're part of, the New England School Development Council. And that award is given to high school seniors who have consistently pursued a high level of academic effort, who have served as positive role models for the student body, who exemplify admirable character and accomplishment. And since this award's been given out, we have given the grade-level administrator, the assistant principal, who is in charge of that year's senior class, the opportunity to select two students who fit those criteria. Those students this evening, and each of them will be coming up in a few moments to make some remarks, and I'll give a little more information on each of them, but the two students receiving this award this evening are Patrick Barbosa and Sierra Hossard. The other award that we've given out this evening is the Annual Superintendent's Award for Academic Excellence. We are maintaining the longstanding tradition of honoring the currently two top-ranked students in the senior class, and I do not know which order they're ranked in, or perhaps they're tied, we just don't know at this point, but alphabetically, those two students are Noah Chonk and Fiona Wang. So these are four extraordinary students I'm really pleased to be honoring this evening, and we will begin with Patrick Barbosa. So I'm going to give a little information about Patrick that Ms. Wen has provided to me, and then we'll ask Patrick to come up and make some brief remarks. So Patrick actually grew up in Shrewsbury until the age of eight, and then he and his mother moved to Brazil where his parents were from originally. He adjusted to his new way of living because actually his first language was English, but then his instruction in Brazil was in Portuguese, in that, you know, he really showed a lot of resilience through that and developed some interest in soccer and running. And in 2021, Patrick returned to Shrewsbury, started attending Oak Middle School, and then moved into Shrewsbury High School. He was because he had adapted the Portuguese language, he was part of our English Language Education Program. He navigated that, his return, making connections with the Brazilian community, staying involved in soccer, taekwondo. Patrick bonds very well with his teachers and worked very hard with them. They were great resources and motivators to him as he studied hard. His upward trajectory of success has been significant during his high school experience. As a senior in high school, he's now tested out of English Language Education Services, is taking honors-level classes, including, I noticed in power schools, some Project Lead the Way courses in computer science and human body systems, and he's currently applying to local colleges with an intended major in computer science. So, would like to recognize Patrick and invite him to come up to the podium to make a few brief remarks.
Testing. I just wanted to say, you know, hello everyone for coming and accepting me here. I want to start by thanking my school directors, Mrs. Wen and Dr. Sawyer, especially. This award means a lot to me. I fought a lot for this, and to be called up here, it's been a great opportunity, and you know, I'll always remember this moment in my life as the year passes on, of course. And I also want to start by thanking my parents, the great family that I have for being there for me always, 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 being there in my ups and downs in life and I want to thank my parents for helping me pursue my education and for working hard on me and being humble, as well as, I just want to thank Shrewsbury High School teachers and especially my ELE teachers, Mrs. Nattenville, Mrs. Berkeley, Mrs. Cattaldo, all of them, and my Oak Middle School teachers as well. I cannot forget each and every single one of the teachers that I've had, all of them. I'll always remember you, right? And yeah, all of them had hard determination on me, and I just feel blessed with that, right? And now, of course, I have an interest in computer sciences, and the opportunity for me to take Project Lead the Way engineering courses is a great blessing as well. And yeah, I decided to study computer sciences in colleges, and I've already made my progressions towards that, and I'm very grateful for all the moments that I've had, especially with the help of my counselor, Mr. Greg Saboff, a very important person that has been in my life for school. He has always been there for me, and I take pleasure in knowing that I've had someone very determined and very nice and very smart to be helping me in this situation in school and guiding me to this path that I'm now pursuing. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. You can go back and sit with your family. That's great. And next, the next recipient of the National School Development Council Award for Academic Growth is Sierra Hossard. Sierra has been attending Shrewsbury Public Schools since preschool. During her time at Shrewsbury High School, she's consistently excelled in her courses, moving from college prep to advanced placement level through the years. She enjoys learning and working collaboratively with her peers. She's known to be very responsible and proactive when it comes to her academics. She's not afraid to advocate for herself. Her organized nature allows her to complete her schoolwork and adapt to challenges that come her way. She intends to major in college in business with a particular interest in sales. It is said that Sierra is empathetic and will go out of her way to help anyone with a need. She's easy to talk to, has a magnetic personality, is fiercely independent and resourceful, and meets her goals through hard work. She's currently working two jobs, keeping up with her studies. When time allows, she does like to snowboard, listen to music, work out at the gym, and spend quality time with her friends. But Sierra, would you please come up and make some remarks?
Okay, so I just wanted to start off by saying thank you so much for this opportunity and for this award, and I wanted to personally thank the Shrewsbury School System for helping me to get to where I am today. I started in Shrewsbury at Beal, and I wanted to thank all of the staff in the public schools, especially my counselor at Shrewsbury High School, Ms. Donna Freo, and my biology teacher in sophomore year, Dr. DeBag. Both of them helped me become the best version of myself without even really realizing it, and they helped me persevere through some really difficult situations. I also wanted to thank my family and Ms. Wen for supporting me and pushing me to do my best always. I've personally always had an interest in business, and the opportunity to study and take business classes in Shrewsbury High School really solidified my decision in wanting to study business in college, and I just wanted to say thank you so much again for this opportunity and for this award, especially Dr. Sawyer and Ms. Wen again, and Mr. Bizidlo, because this really means a lot to me as I've worked really hard to get here. Thank you.
Thank you, Sierra. Next, with the Superintendent's Award for Academic Excellence is Noah Chonk. Noah has achieved a great deal during his time at Shrewsbury High School. He's a recipient of the Yale Book Award. He's a National Merit Scholarship semifinalist. He's a member of the National, the French, and the Math Honor Societies. He's a member of our Student Advisory Committee. You've seen him present to the school committee before. He's also the captain of the cross-country and indoor and outdoor track teams. It notes here that he runs a 431 mile, so he's quite accomplished. And at the state level, this summer participated in the annual state-level government program called Boy State, where he was elected Lieutenant Governor across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So just a few of his accomplishments. Again, he's one of the two highest-ranked students in the senior class of 2025, so at this time, we'll invite Noah to come up and make some remarks.
Hello. Sorry. I would like to start by thanking Dr. Sawyer, Mr. Bizidlo, Ms. Wen, and the members of the school committee for my award and for creating a high school environment in which I was able to push myself from the start. From my time at Beal School and Floral through my four years at SHS, I've been continuously challenged to think and learn in new and different ways. I'd like to thank my mom, who always made sure that I stayed on top of my classes, my dad, who has shown his support for me in whatever I do by taking part himself, such as by going on morning runs with me or skydiving with me for my 18th birthday, and my two younger brothers, Caleb and Jethro, who are always ready to help me, whether it's by cheering me on at races, giving me space when I need to study, or playing video games with me when I need a break from studying. I'd also like to mention the profound effect that the Athletics Department at the high school has had on me. Since the week before the start of my freshman year, I've been involved with distance running at the school. The community that I found in the cross-country and track teams remains unlike any other I've seen at the school, and so for that, I would like to thank Mr. Costa, Coach Butterfield, and Coach Wayne. I'm also especially grateful for our assistant coach, Dan Mortmore, an alumni of SHS who has been a remarkable role model for me both at and outside of practice. Thanks to them and the culture of their teams, I've learned more about who I am as a person, but more importantly, the value that hard work, discipline, and a positive mindset can have not just in running but in life. As the captain of the three teams I've been a part of, I now realize how integral the role of upperclassmen and captains has been in maintaining such a culture, so I would like to thank the captains that I've had for the past three years as well. Once again, I'm incredibly thankful for this award, and I'm even more grateful for the amazing school system and people that have shaped me into the person that I am today. Thank you.
Thank you, Noah. And the other Superintendent's Award for Academic Excellence for the top-ranked students in the class of 2025 is Fiona Wang. Fiona is a recipient of the Harvard Book Award. She's received the Excellence in the Science Award, both in 2022 for her Chemistry Honors Class and in 2023 for AP Chemistry. She has been a member of the Varsity Math Team, both locally and has competed at the national level. She's the co-president of the Girls Who Code Club, a member of the National Honor, Latin National, and Math National Honor Societies. She worked as a research analyst for Mass Hire this past summer, and she has also, in athletics outside of Shrewsbury High School, she competes for the Greenwood Swimming Club, where she's qualified for the USA Futures Swimming Championship at the national level in the 400 individual medley. Please welcome Fiona.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer, for the kind introduction. I'm incredibly honored to have been chosen for this award. I wouldn't be here today without the support of the people in my life. First off, I would like to express my gratitude towards my parents for their unconditional commitment and care. Their sacrifices have provided me with countless opportunities that have shaped me into who I am today. I would also like to thank my sister for being such an inspiring role model and for her continuous encouragement. My time at Shrewsbury High School has been highlighted by the amazing faculty and staff who have fostered a safe and collaborative environment where I can explore my intellectual passions. In particular, thank you to Mrs. Pryor, Mrs. Moynihan, and Mrs. Noel for enriching my academic interest in STEM. Additionally, as co-president of Girls Who Code, I've realized the importance of expanding opportunities for women in STEM-related fields. Lastly, I'd like to acknowledge my close friends for their unwavering support and compassion. Once again, a huge thank you to the school committee and to Dr. Sawyer for this honor.
So as you can see, we have some really remarkable young people. At this time, I'd ask Mr. Bizidlo and Ms. Wen to come forward just to make a few brief remarks about the students we're honoring this evening, and then we'll have the opportunity of the school committee to comment. You can sit at the table or at the podium, whichever is the table probably works fine.
Well, thanks for having us, and thanks for your support of our students in terms of their achievement, recognizing their hard work and achievement. It's really gratifying and humbling to sit before you when you have four outstanding students who represent the quality of the student body at Shrewsbury High School. I think Mrs. Wen selected two outstanding candidates from her class, and both Fiona and Noah for the Superintendent's Award, truly outstanding representatives of the quality of what we have. I'll let Mrs. Wen talk, and maybe I'll wrap up, get her feedback on her students and her case load, but I'm just, again, humbled and gratified by the work that the students have done and their remarks tonight.
I think for me, this is my first year as a great administrator going through my first class. Oftentimes, I ask my students at this point, "Do you remember who you were when you were a freshman?" So, a lot of students really just stop and, you know, they start to think about their journey to senior year. These four students have worked tremendously to get to where they are now, and they should be so proud of them. I am proud of them, and I think it's such an amazing experience for them to, the growth that they had from freshman year to now is just amazing, and I think it just sets the foundation for their future.
Yeah. Excuse me. I think the key for us is when we look at the students that arrive at Shrewsbury High School, they're very well-prepared. I think when we think of the end result of senior classes, it takes pre-K to eight to get them to where we need them to be, and we continue to build on the foundation of the success they've had within the school district. So I think those things are absolutely fantastic, and our teachers and educators at the pre-K eight have done wonderful work with the students to prepare them for high school. Additionally, I think, and I've said this to parents all the time, is like it takes a partnership to educate students, and I think we have outstanding parents in our community that support education and support their students, and you heard that tonight with the thanks and examples of how their parents have supported them and their siblings, and that's when we have the synergy that really works. That's what makes this district special, when we have schools, parents, working together with our staff. We get the best outcomes possible, and we, you know, squeeze that lemon, we get as much juice out as we can from our students, and this is just a great representation of what we have at the high school. So, thank you for honoring our students. We really appreciate it, and they should be very proud. Their parents should be very, their families should be very proud, as well deserved.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Colleagues, questions? Appreciate it.
Just want to congratulate all the students. Also, very impressive. I'd like to congratulate the families as well for all of your support of your students, your sons and daughters. It was very gratifying to hear you mention all of the different teachers that have impacted you throughout your career, and also some of the classes that you've been taking, that are helping you kind of focus on what you may want to do next, because that's kind of, it's helpful to us to hear that, you know, someone's pursuing business, other computer science, because we're, you know, focused on creating more opportunities in those fields for you. So thank you for sharing that with us as well tonight, but best wishes to all of you.
Ms. Heffernan.
Yeah, to Patrick, Sierra, Noah, and Fiona, congratulations. And for your parents, I think this is like the beginning of a big year, where hopefully you'll hear more of this and more of accolades for your young people, and we get to see when you talk to us, your parents smiling and taking photos of you, and they're going to take lots of photos of you, and that's okay. But also sometimes a little bit of tears too, right? Because they're really incredibly proud of you. And I think, when I think about these young people, how incredibly well-spoken that they are coming with goals and ambitions, and they may change, and that's okay, but you've kind of got also huge gratitude, right? And so to the point, right, it's what, Mr. Bizidlo, you just said it takes a partnership with parent. What I heard was like it takes a whole community. Parents are definitely the bedrock for all of you, but we heard about your siblings, we heard about your coaches and your captains and your extracurriculars and why that's really important to you, but also the teachers and the guidance counselors and right down to teachers at Oak and at Beal so well before even entering the high school building, and that gratitude, I hope you keep with you to kind of see that there's a lot of people out here who are really rooting for you and are sort of part of that process. So, I'm incredibly proud of you and the role that I'm in. I know we all are, but also just huge congratulations. Enjoyed this evening.
Yeah, congratulations to you all, really. I really appreciate you sharing your stories with us and the success that you've achieved at this point in your educational journey. I know for us as school committee members, this is our favorite part of this role, is to celebrate student success, and it does take a village, right? So, congrats to the students, your families. You should be very proud to our high school principal, assistant principal, and all the teachers that have supported you through this journey. Congratulations, and thank you very much. Dr. Sawyer, any further?
Again, I'm so proud of these students. It's a great opportunity to be able to provide this recognition through these awards, and you, again, should be very proud of what you've accomplished, and we look forward to a successful rest of your senior year and finding out what the next steps for you will be. Before you know it, we'll be walking across that stage in the stadium in late May. So at this time, what we'd like is for each of the students just to come up and shake the committee's hand, get the certificate from me, and then we'll do a little photo op in front here, and then you'll be able to go on your way. So, how about one more round of applause for our students? You can come right in front of here, Patrick. Perfect. Congratulations. 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 All right. Congratulations. And congratulations. And Fiona, congratulations. Well done. All right, so if we could all kind of come in front of the desk here, and then maybe a few guys will stand here.
Stand here.
We can stand behind here, and then they can stand right here. All right, so Noah, you're going to have to get so you don't block.
I'm small. Get in front of you, Joe.
You guys come right in front of us. It'll be fun.
There you go.
Perfect. You can hold up those certificates, open them up.
I'll screen them.
See them?
Patrick, you have to smile.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And congratulations. And Fiona, congratulations. Well done. All right, so if we could all kind of come in front of the desk here, and then maybe a few guys will stand here.
Stand here.
We can stand behind here, and then they can stand right here. All right, so Noah, you're going to have to get so you don't block.
I'm small. Get in front of you, Joe.
You guys come right in front of us. It'll be fun.
There you go.
Perfect. You can hold up those certificates, open them up.
I'll screen them.
See them?
Patrick, you have to smile.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Right. The next item on our agenda is under curriculum. It is a literacy initiative update. Ms. Clowder will present an update on the new literacy curriculum in grades K through six, including materials, student support, and professional learning relative to ongoing literacy initiatives in the district, and will be available to answer any questions that we have. So with that, we'll hand the floor over to Ms. Clowder.
So, good evening. Thank you for your patience. I'm excited about the opportunity to talk about literacy and also by hearing that this is maybe one of a series of small presentations, so that it don't overwhelm me with all the details, but have a chance to kind of talk about what up till now has been a small implementation because we're going big, and that's really exciting for me to see what's going to be available to all students based on the small sample that we had last year. So, I want to start by just explaining, kind of in addition to being passionate about literacy in general and its implications for student success beyond school, one of the things that's been really gratifying is to see the results of students experiencing the EL, Education Literacy Curriculum itself, because of the enthusiasm that we see when students are engaging with the materials, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. But we launched this with a small number of teachers last year, and this is our full implementation year. So, I'm mindful that it seems like old news to me because we started looking at curriculum a full two years ago, and this is kind of the realization of year one, but for many of our teachers, this is year one. So, it's a strange place to live in terms of talking about it, but it's important to acknowledge that it still feels really new to many people in the district, and I'm sure to some of you as well. So I wanted to talk tonight about, when we think about implementation of a new curriculum, I used to think of it as getting new materials for people, and I think that's certainly a key part of it, provisioning well so that everyone has materials, and the quality of those materials is really important. But it really involves addressing classroom practice as well, that we need ongoing focus on professional development in order for people to internalize what's important about the program and to make good decisions in their planning and in their teaching. And it also rests on this assumption that we're continuing to grow a data culture, that we're looking at not just how students are progressing through the curriculum, but also how we're using the data gleaned from classroom observations to think about what teachers need to grow their practice, because we certainly know that learning something takes time, and certainly getting to mastery level with a new curriculum will take time as well. So pictured here is, to her chagrin, Kelly Finneran, who is a teacher leader on the Small Implementation Team. I'm sure she's cursing my name in her head right now, but she'd be the first person to tell you that she's much more comfortable starting off the year, but that she's still starting off the year, but that she's still learning. And I think that from my perspective, the success of a new curriculum launch means that it's exciting for kids, but it also needs to be excited and supportive of teachers. And so, those three pieces have to come together to tell the full story. So, this slide really talks about the integrated improvement model, which is research speak for the three legs, the stool I just talked about, the curriculum, the PD, and the data. This explains kind of the Department of Education's focus on high-quality materials. You can see that some of the effect on students of buying new materials results just from having new updated materials. But what that graph to the right is saying is that the bulk of that effect happens by really engaging teachers and reflecting on their classroom practice. So, DESI doesn't invest money, doesn't award grants unless we purchase high-quality instructional materials. And of course, we want to invest in high-quality materials too. But we also have to lay the groundwork as we're looking at the curriculum to think, what's built into the curriculum that supports teachers in growing their practice? And both in kind of looking at the program and looking at what our teachers have said, we've seen that our initial hopes for for EL are confirmed by our initial experiences. So, why did we pick EL in the first place? You might remember that at the end of 2023, we had selected three programs to evaluate and in EL was the prevailing program. This is how it was rated by Ed Reports, which is an independent third-party organization really just dedicated to improving education. It's not the only high-quality curriculum that was rated, which is why we looked at three. But I think when you're looking at this in terms of building knowledge, which we know is key for comprehension, the text quality, and I brought some samples with me today, you probably recognize some of these if you have a young person in your life. And also looking at usability. Those things are key components of of their rating system. They're also highly rated by DESI through an organization called CURATE, which is essentially an acronym for bringing teams of teachers together, looking at common criteria. And you can see EL Education Literacy has, is an open-source curriculum, which means that you can get their lessons for free online. You have to purchase the materials and there's two different vendors to purchase the materials. We bought the 2019 edition from Imagine Learning. So, this is a rating from DESI on Imagine Learning's version. So, you can see they're looking at an overall very high rating and also some different factors, including accessibility for students, usability for teachers, impact on learning, text quality and organization, and classroom tasks. Foundational skills, for example, you can see in the green is rated less highly. As a reminder, we had a foundational skills program in place with foundations and we built on that. And so, we're not using EL's skills strand. We're using a different different approach so that we could shrink the change that our teachers and students are experiencing. So, EL Literacy is organized into four modules over the course of the year and there's three units in every module. And at the heart of the program, you can see that the module lessons follow a similar similar program. Starts off with building background knowledge and vocabulary and then extended reading and study. Again, we know that in part, student's comprehension is linked to what's their background knowledge and what is their vocabulary. So, that extended study builds that vocabulary. And then extended writing and performance tasks. So, in addition to learning new skills, then students by the end of the unit are asked to kind of apply those skills with a performance task. The other piece I think is really important, if you look at the structure of the units, is that it integrates the four domains that we know are important for language development: speaking, listening, reading, and writing. This is really important because we recognize the importance of speaking as rehearsal for quality writing. We want kids to be skillful readers and writers, but also because of the role it has in language development for students who are learning English. And so, a program that focuses on all four of those domains and the way they structure their lessons is going to be better able to serve the diversity of student needs that we see in our schools. The other thing that's compelling about EL is that they include structures that help teachers make sense of of the planning process. Planning is always complex, especially if teachers are becoming more familiar with a new curriculum. But they use a structure called the four Ts to kind of help teachers orient to new modules. So, what's the topic? The topic here in this third grade example is overcoming learning challenges. And there's key questions that teachers will return to. What's the task in this particular unit? They're going to make a reading strategies bookmark. The targets are the grade level standards. So, as part of implementing this program, teachers become really familiar with not just what students are learning, but the depth of which they're learning and how it connects to the following grade. And you can see those bulleted here. And then the books. So, in looking at this first unit for grade three, those are key texts that all students are going to be required to read. And then they're also building their background knowledge at the same time. So, this is, this is an example of kind of what the first module of grade four looks like in contrast. So, they are both learning about poets by reading about them nonfiction and also reading a novel, which kind of builds on that interplay between what they're reading about and the story of Love That Dog, which if you haven't read, you need to read. And the quality of the texts across all grades is really significant. So, in addition to asking teachers how they felt about it, we asked kids and you can see students last year talking about how they enjoyed writing, how they learned not only to build their skills, but to persevere, that the program also made collaborating with their classmates enjoyable, and that they felt engaged by having their, creating projects and then sharing them with an audience. So, the words that come through for me are kind of fun, options, learning, and enjoyed. When I hear that from from students, I'm excited about that. And I think our teachers were too, because they could feel the energy that students experienced as a result of growing those those skills. Oops, sorry. I think the other piece that's important is although we're talking about the curriculum as a high-quality resource, it's just a tool. So, we need students to be engaged in decision-making as they're thinking about how to apply their skills. So too do we need teachers to be engaged in making critical decisions around how to emphasize different aspects of a lesson. So, we talked about the four Ts as helping anchor teachers in the standards. They need support thinking about, I'm not going to read the teaching points as a script. So, where am I going to look at the needs of the students in front of me and make decisions about where to put more or less emphasis? And so, as we're thinking about how we translate the curriculum into powerful practice, we need to focus on the professional development that teachers are are gaining and the support they need in order to do that well. And we call that kind of essentially bridging the knowing and doing gap. If if I was sitting here with Joe, he'd probably think of a sports analogy. And our allied arts teachers think like, oh, I know this very well. I'm thinking of dancing. I'm I'm very enthusiastic and I have a pretty good sense of rhythm. But if I was going to try to dance, I would need to kind of practice in front of a mirror for a while. And then I would get really brave and I'd need a partner to know how well my practice in front of the mirror really worked. And then I'd need to be able to take it onto the dance floor. And so, if we're going to really invest in improving outcomes for students, we have to get into the dance floor. And so, looking at this, we call that instructional rounds. And when I'm looking at kind of classroom work, I'm going to take these slides slightly out of order. This is a piece of a memo from Floral Street School where the where the principal, Lisa McCubee, is kind of reflecting back to teachers, the celebration of what's going really well with foundational skills teaching, including, you know, engaging students. We focused a lot of what are some techniques for engaging all kids simultaneously? So, how how do we can up the participation? And you can see everybody's skywriting in that piece in the middle. And they're asking for full participation from the students as they tap out the different sounds and words. And then you can see the focus on students using all components of the foundational skills piece on the right. So, a small thing like the way the foundations curriculum is written, students build words. And then when they put their tiles away, there's a moment where they're repeating those sounds as they put them away. And something as simple as making sure that that's a consistent practice really makes a difference for kids. And so, the first part is high-quality curriculum. Second part is kind of growing practice. Because learning at one time is not going to be sufficient, especially when you're talking about the complexity of the change that's built into this shift. Okay. So, I'm going to show you an example of what I mean by that with EL. So, we just talked about what instructional rounds gleaned from foundational reading. When we evaluated EL education, we found that, you know, it shows that yellow box at the bottom, it was scored by the different implementers for that program as being significantly higher than the other two programs we considered. And you see all the positives on the left-hand side. But we also noticed that no curriculum is perfect. And so, there are some things on the right-hand side. There's a lot of whole group lessons. How am I going to keep all those kids engaged for that amount of time? And that's that's by design because part of the research about strong literacy practices is making sure that all students are really engaged throughout the lesson. But that's a shift from the small group guided reading that we were doing before. So, it's natural that that came up for teachers. We can anticipate that they need some support with that. And that the text is challenging for students. We're shifting from, we're going to give students leveled text to all kids are going to be anchored in grade-level text. And so, teachers might need to help scaffold what that instruction looks like. So, as we think about the PD, we're now focused with instructional rounds on how do we not only just talk at district professional development days about literacy, which we're going to do on Friday, but how do we work at the building level to support kind of the nuts and bolts implementation of that? So, I'm going to share some slides that were featured yesterday at a faculty meeting at the elementary level about scaffolding. And then you can test yourself to see kind of how well you you master what I'm going to share with you here. But we think about scaffolding as a temporary structure, in this case for students, designed to help them access the grade-level tax and text that they're reading. But it's not lowering the bar. So, in other words, it breaks a learning task into manageable chunks. If I'm going to learn to dance, I want one move, then I'm going to learn the other, then I'm going to put the two moves together. But I'm going to learn the same moves as the really skillful dancer on my right, just going to learn in a different way. So, teachers were asked to kind of think about that notion of scaffolding and then work with their colleagues to sort. What would you put as a scaffold? What's not a scaffold? So that we all have a consistent understanding of what it means to make sure that all kids access grade-level content, but that we're also supporting kids. We're not just throwing them in the deep end. And that we're on the same page as we do that. So, you can take this little quiz at home based on these three slides. But I think that illustrates that second part of a really successful implementation, which is that teachers need ongoing support and professional development. And that that professional development can take the form of standing alone, but also needs to be embedded in their day-to-day practice. And then I think the next piece is really kind of growing our culture. This slide should look familiar because we talked about how we're tracking student progress, not just with the star screener, which gives us a big picture, but with the progress monitoring tools we have in place to track. Okay, so these kids are getting more reading support. How are we seeing that that reading support is making a difference? So, we have three screening cycles and then three intervention cycles, so a total of six data cycles where our kids are getting support and we're reevaluating, does this kid still need support? Do they need a lower level of support or a higher level of support? And we switch and look again. And just as we're collecting data about student progress, when it comes to curriculum implementation, being in classrooms to collect data and to celebrate growth around the shifts in practice that I was describing is important. And so, instructional rounds help us to do that. But the big picture here, I think, is that part of implementing anything new is managing change and change takes time. And there's a healthy tension between wanting to see improved outcomes for students really quickly and also wanting to make sure teachers have adequate support, that we don't have the expectation that this is your first year and now you got it and you're all good. Because we're hearing from teachers that planning is complicated and they need support and they need time for their with their colleagues to collaborate. And I wouldn't be doing a service to their good work if I didn't articulate that need and that support for them. So, I'm very confident that we're going to see really great outcomes for kids, but it's going to take some time. And we're going to have to embrace a growth mindset, both for our students and also for teachers. I think the strength here is that we have always had really dedicated and skillful teachers. And I think this is another way for me to be reminded of just how hard they do work on behalf of their students and families. And so, I want to just express my gratitude not only for our teachers, but for our coaches and our principals, who are finding creative ways to provide everybody training and then some people who need more support, more support? For questions?
All right. Thank you for the presentation. Colleagues, questions?
I had one question around the writing component, but you answered that, I think, for me in your presentation, because that did come up at the parent council meeting when we all met with everyone about how is the writing component go along with that? So, I'm glad to see that is a piece. But I do have a question around comprehension. How is how is that evaluated? Because you might be reading, but you might not be comprehending the information that you're reading.
So, there's different assessments built into the program, kind of mid-unit assessments that test how well kids can understand the gist of a text or how well they can kind of talk about different perspectives, depending on what is that they're learning. And so, those are interim check-ins. But I think that, you know, we still talk to kids about books and try to glean what they understand. And so, there's opportunities when kids are talking to each other or talking about the book to the teacher, for teachers to assess that as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Ruchey.
Thank you very much for the report. It's very helpful to kind of see how this is getting off the ground this year. I wanted to just acknowledge that with regard to the curriculum materials, the large grant that you were able to obtain last year of $250,000, which really put us in a good position to obtain a lot of the materials that we need to launch this program. So, thank you again for all the work that you did on that for us on behalf of the district. I also wanted to just, I think, I think the using the data culture and building on that is fantastic. And I noted in your report that based off June data, you were able to kind of place kids a little bit in in different groupings and so forth this year to get them off to a good start, which I I thought was wonderful. And also, just to acknowledge that the interventions last year resulted in you going from like 662 students that needed assistance to down to 388 students, which was a huge improvement over the course of the year last year. So, just thank you very much and I'm glad to see this is off to a good start this year.
Well, thank you for your support of the reading specialist positions and and all of the other pieces. It's been very helpful.
Ms. Ruchey, what?
Thank you for the report. I actually have a student that's reading Esperanza Rising. So, I was able to see. But actually, so I guess I see it as a positive. But to circle back to your slide where you had the areas of concern, one of them was it was challenging for students. So, when I looked at, we were actually working on homework together and I was impressed with the the questions that she had. Yes. So, when we were going through her homework, what she was presenting to me, I was like, wow, this is really high level. Like, this is, this is good. Like, it was making her think outside of the box. And it was questions that I definitely wouldn't think to ask a fifth grader with that. So, is that for challenging for students? Are the teachers finding some of the work that they're having the students do, that it's a little above them? Or are kids, I was impressed because she actually, in my, in her case, she was actually able to like stop and think and answer it where before she would just, you know, answer the question and be done with it. Instead, it provoked her to keep thinking about things. And she came back to me like 10 minutes later. She's like, I have another thing to add to that. So, are are the teachers finding that some of these questions are like way above the kids have?
I don't want to suggest the teachers think challenge is a bad thing because that's not the case at all. It was more that this is the group that was initially looking at the three programs and they were noticing that that grade-level text was going to be a significant leap for some of their students who the that grade level text was going to be a significant leap for some of their students who had been in more guided reading level texts. So thinking, wow, this is going to be a big change for all of us. Um, so if a kid can't read Esperanza Rising yet, how do we keep them engaged in the high-level conversation and grow their knowledge until they can can do that? Um, how do we learn more about close reading? Um, but it wasn't the teachers didn't think challenge was good, it was just more like, wow, this is a rigorous program.
Yeah, I mean, it definitely just from those small snippet that I saw on that one night of her reading, I was like, wow, this is way above what I was doing in fifth grade. I mean, it was great.
Yeah, they're they're thinking like some students might be really thrown by some of this, so we'll need more support.
Yeah, uh, thank you so much for the presentation. Um, uh, recognize the big change that we've asked of our staff. And as you said, this has been a conversation we've been having for a while, but for many they're kind of at the, at the wouldn't say they're at the beginning, it's October, but it's still still new and still working through it. And I certainly am hearing from some of uh, the teachers I know who live in the district, that that this is harder, this is new, this is a lot. And so want to appreciate them as well for 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 taking that on. One of the things that I took away from our um, night with the all-school councils and when talking in uh, I was at an elementary table and with a bunch of the parents who were there. Um, flash for slightly for Mr. Wensky, but we didn't get past like our strategic goal one point one, which is about literacy, without some of the parents going like, what are you all talking about and how are we measuring it? And they had like lots of, and these are engaged parents who are on school councils, right? And so they were um, asking a lot of questions, well, how are we going to measure it? And I said, well, flip forward a few more pages and we have that in here. But I realized how important it is to bring our parents along with us in this journey. And so I wonder if you can talk through, and I want to appreciate, I'm not asking how do we ask our teachers to do more and sort of at a district and building level. I'm remembering years ago for my now junior, um, the math curriculum at that time was sort of a new thing at the elementary level. And there was a parent event at Oak at the, in the auditorium and said, here's what we're doing and how we're doing it. And so what kind of ideas might you have either like that or at the building levels to sort of help parents understand who maybe are thinking, this book seems a lot harder than last year, or who are wondering, you know, what's happening and with, you know, whether I saw the note of star assessments will go out, but I also heard another parent go, oh, I looked on Power School and I saw that star thing and I'm trying to figure out what that is. And so how, how could we get maybe a little bit um, uh, help get to the parent community a little, a little sooner? And say, here's all this exciting stuff that's happening and kind of help them be feel like they're part of that change too.
Yep, so I think that's a great point. And um, I I think, I remember that night at um, at Oak around math, um, we are planning something like that in November.
Okay, great.
Um, November because we recognized that the front of the year is loaded for teachers and for parents. And we had the Mary Maker event, so trying to make sure we parse it out so that we get participation. Because that has been a challenge for us and we've changed the structure of Curriculum Night to be open house, which was wildly successful for parents and for kids, but meant that there was less time for kind of the curriculum conversations that typically happen. So we've been grappling with that and I would really welcome your suggestions beyond a parent evening, because I'm hoping that we can encourage people to attend. But thinking about how to um, parse communication out in digestible chunks is something that I would welcome your suggestions on. Um, because I think with STAR, we have sent home some parent reports and we've asked teachers to do that as well. I, I think part of the dilemma for what's visible, and and I don't want to go down too far rabbit hole, was that we we take the report that's packaged from the curriculum and we change, from the uh, platform and we change it a little bit because there's advertising frankly built into there that I don't feel like we should pitch to to parents on their report. So that results in a little bit of a delay. And so when I know that that's really set in Power School, then I would send out a communication. I just haven't had a chance to do that because our first data cycle just ended. But I I do think people will need reminders about what the scores mean. And so those reports for parents that say like, this is what this means. I think it, what we've heard from parents is it's most impactful to actually have teachers available to kind of answer questions. And so I think Parent Conference Day is a natural day to kind of prepare for having those conversations. At the same time, it's a little difficult because it's out of sync. As Erin mentioned, we hit the ground running by looking at students that were in intervention last year first. And so we didn't have to wait to to offer support for students. So some students have gotten letters saying that they're in an intervention cycle right now. Well, other students have have not gotten a heads up about the screening and we've got to somehow figure out that cadence better, so. I I think you're absolutely right on both counts, still trying to figure out how we do that better.
I want to sort of also like remind us sometimes that there is a, we want to plan it all out. And at the same time, like the media is talking about this issue, right? The Globe is still reporting on it pretty regularly, what our district's doing, DESI is talking about it. And so like parents may see that and not know that we're engaged in something really important here, right? And so, and there are handfuls who I meet in the grocery store who turn into this meeting, but many who don't, right? And so if you're not here and you're not maybe reading the um, uh, our very, very wonderful newspaper home, like how are the other ways that we can kind of do smaller samplings, even things in the, you know, the principals' um, weeklies? Parents, I know pay attention to those because they got all those important dates of various things. And so how can we put some small things out there that maybe are teasers, that also have a sheet to take home at Curriculum Day? Because even Curriculum Day, I'm thinking of back at elementary school, those were short, fifteen minutes. And there's a lot of things you might want to cover and so some materials to take home. And so, yes, not everyone may come up to a Oak Middle School night, right, right? And so, but how can we also just kind of keep some clickable links that we put out and into different things to kind of help people understand sort of the the trend that we're on? And the trend is a really, really good one that lots of communities are making. And so um, um, that 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 I I learned that that in parents who are already really engaged with our school system, really were like deers in headlights that we had, we're doing something, right? And I was like, oh, okay, we need to, we need to do something about that, we need to, we need to try this. So I'm very excited you're thinking about it and yes, we have to space it out, but even small little things, maybe we can get blast out in in little ways to kind of also build the buzz. When we do have a bigger event that people want to show up and learn about it and don't have the like, it's in two weeks, what what is this about? And I have no idea, so thank you for thinking about it. I'm not a communications expert, I just recognize you have a challenge. And uh, and also, but at the same time, you have so many engaged um, people at the building levels from, you know, the the principals and these wonderful assistant principals and others who hopefully can help us figure out creative ways to get parents uh, at all those different, different points, so thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sure tho- uh, those are good suggestions and the principals newsletters do get more traction, we can leverage that.
Dr. Sawyer's newsletter also, I'm sure gets super attraction, I'm not saying that. I just know that if you want to know if you're going to miss the like signup form for the, you know, the field trip, that's that's how you're going to get it.
I think the other piece about EL is that parents can anticipate being invited in to see various things because there is a performance test aspect. So I I know that that was something that was really enjoyable last year for many of the um, pilot teachers. And so there will be work products to to enjoy as well, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, I think communications is the key. I think certainly, this is a great forum to kind of explain where we are in the process. Uh, and I, like you said, managing change has its challenges. I think it's helpful to walk through the process. Um, and explains that, you know, it's it's a marathon, not a sprint, I think I said the same thing last year at this time. Uh, it's a lot of movement and process, a lot of tweaks, like in terms of process improvement. And that does take time, but it's good to see the the steady progress in the space. I also appreciate the data-driven, uh, da- data-driven mindset that we're driving uh, to our staff as well. So thank you so much, Dr. Sawyer.
I want to thank Ms. Cloder for her presentation and for her leadership of this process, which has been, I actually was sitting with the uh, principal at a school visit recently and and was raving about just the way Amy's orchestrated this whole piece going back, you know, a year plus from uh, and the way things are moving through. Um, I want to thank certainly our our educators who are putting this into practice. Uh, and uh, you know, again, thank you to the school committee for the resources and the community and to buy the resources, add some staffing in terms of our reading specialists, there's a whole host of things that are happening here. Um, all that are, will continue to to highlight over the course of the year. I will, I will just also say that it was enormously gratifying for me, uh, I've, I finished my elementary school visits this round. Um, and I happened to just so align that there were a lot of fourth grade classes doing literacy uh, when I was uh, touring and visiting classrooms with with the principals. Um, and I saw a variety of lessons uh, with the book that uh, Ms. Cloder has there. I can't read the title from here again.
Love that dog.
Love that dog. Which is good advice for life generally, but in terms of, uh, and I'm a poetry aficionado. To hear our our fourth grade students, and I saw them in Ms. Finneran's room, I saw them in some rooms at at other schools as well, really articulating some really high-level thinking about poems that I studied in high school and college. Was really exciting. So in terms of high-quality materials, in terms of high, you know, critical thinking at a high level, teachers really orchestrating those conversations and really grappling with texts and what it means. It was outstanding. And so, you know, I'm excited to see more of what's happening as, you know, now all of our classes, K through six, are 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 doing this, uh, implementing this curriculum. So again, just really exciting work and I think we're absolutely on the right track. And I think it was a wise decision to pick this program. Um, and uh, we look forward to supporting our educators and implementing it. And I think great things are going to happen for kids as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. All right, the next item on our agenda is under policy. It is a vote on the district's strategic goals and action steps for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. At our September twenty-fifth meeting, Dr. Sawyer presented a draft of uh, these goals and action steps uh, for school committee to review. The draft was posted for public review and comment and presented at the joint meeting of all school council in the district on September thirtieth. Uh, with the feedback regarding implementation of the proposed goals and action steps we received. Uh, no changes have been made to the draft. Uh, colleagues, any uh, public uh, response to your inboxes? I did not see any either.
No.
So Dr. Sawyer, any further comments?
No, I appreciated the, uh, we reviewed the feedback that was recorded at that meeting. You've referred to it a couple of times, it was really helpful feedback. There wasn't anything that I I saw that would uh, lead us to change some of the languages in the draft. It was really more about implementation and making sure we're communicating and um, implementing it well. So uh, again, uh, we've had a chance to uh, review this, the district leadership team reviewed a draft of it. There was an earlier workshop with the school committee. Um, so I I feel like it's been thoroughly vetted and I think it reflects good progression from last year's plan. Um, and just for those watching, you know, there's a five-year overall strategic plan that was adopted. Last year was our first full school year under that plan. This is our second full school year. Um, and I think that a lot of these are the next level of of implementation of different areas. And I think the fact that we are, remain focused on some really key things that the community said this is what we want uh, for our schools and this is what best practice uh, demands of us at this time. Um, I I think it's a, it's an excellent set of goals for the year, challenging, ambitious, uh, but certainly appropriate. And uh, I uh, recommend that you vote to approve them this evening.
Right, thank you so much. Any further comments, questions now? Okay, I need a motion then, uh, that the school committee vote to approve the enclosed proposed district strategic goals and action steps for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five as presented.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, please do so by saying aye. Aye, and the motion carries unanimously, thank you. Uh, right, the next item on our agenda, as I get to it. Okay, the next item on our agenda is under finance and operations. It is a pre-K to twelve enrollment and pre-K to grade eight class size report. Uh, each year, the district is required to provide a report on enrollment uh, as of October first to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. An overview of this district-wide enrollment data uh, has been presented to the school committee in our packets and Dr. Sawyer is here to review it with us now.
Thank you. This is the annual report, October first is the benchmark date. Um, that every year each district reports out on and uses as a comparison from year to year. It's used for a variety of reasons, uh, and and for the, probably the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, whether that's grants or school funding and chapter seventy formula and a whole variety of issues. In terms of uh, the, let's see here, here we go. Getting this default message. Trying to get me publicly to, Chrome is my default browser. Sure. Um, so a couple of key points here that I want to uh, share. This is a slide shows the difference at different levels uh, from last October first to this October first. Six fewer pre-K students, that's a pretty standard number, about two hundred students at this time of year. And this is a reminder, our preschool enrollment grows continuously over the course of the year as eligible students turn age three. In grades K to four, we were up twenty-one students compared to last year. And we were a very stable, uh, middle school and high school, almost exactly the same number, just plus one, uh, at both of those grade spans. Um, in our RISE program, uh, which we had planned for, um, has added some students. Uh, went from seventeen students last year to twenty-two students in our eighteen to twenty-two transition program, uh, the RISE Maple and May program. That's plus five. Um, so overall, plus twenty-two uh, for our uh, K to twelve, pre-K to twelve numbers. Um, this slide here illustrates our total preschool through grade twelve numbers. Again, the RISE students would be in addition to that. Um, you can see we've been pretty consistent at about fifty-nine hundred students, um, plus or minus over the last five years. Uh, this, I think, is an interesting slide where it shows by grade level. You know, we we look at our middle and high school grades and we've got a little bit of choppiness there between some peaks of a, you know, four hundred and ninety in grade six, uh, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-six in grades ten and eleven. Now, the numbers usually drop a little bit from eighth grade to high school, uh, not as dramatically as they used to, of course, because, uh, for two reasons. One is that usually there would be a a number of students who would leave at grade nine to go to St. John's. A lot of those students are leaving already at grade seven since they had middle school grades. But uh, and then also we would typically have twenty-five to thirty-five students attend Assabette Vocational Technical High School, which as you know, has been uh, not accessible to Shrewsbury students because of some policy changes and admissions there. That's a whole other issue we've spoken about. Um, but we would expect um, those numbers that are currently in eighth grade now, for example, four seventy-five, to be reduced somewhat uh, when they hit grade nine, might be more like that four fifty number we see this year. When you look at the elementary level, the upper elementary grades, grades three and four, actually two, three and four, uh, we've got similar numbers, four twenty or a little bit under. Our our K and one numbers are a little bit below that. Um, now our K increased from last year to this year, uh, but it'll be very interesting over the next couple of years to see if those elementary grades start to settle in more around that three hundred and eighty number, um, as opposed to more in that a little over four hundred, which are lower than. And then there's a little build over time, usually the, there's increases over time in the different grade cohorts. There's a slide in your, in your report uh, that shows those progressions over time uh, for previous classes, including this year's senior class. Uh, but obviously it bears watching and this is all, uh, in terms of our use of space, our programming, our costs, all of those things. Our class sizes are affected by the level of enrollment. This slide shows our kindergarten enrollment history. You can see we did move up about twenty students more than last year. So we're we're regaining uh, numbers since COVID. Closer to that peak of three eighty-eight we saw in the ten-year span back in two thousand and sixteen. In terms of grade one, uh, down a little bit compared to last year. Um, and uh, you've seen that we're, we made a, not quite where those four hundred numbers were going back to uh, twenty twenty. And again, we'll see if this settles into being a longer-term trend. This is an interesting slide because in the past, it was really difficult to predict our grade one numbers before we were able to provide full-day kindergarten for all kids. Uh, because we had a lot of families that would opt to send their student to private kindergarten so they have this full-day experience and then have their student enter the public school district at grade one. Um, so you can see, it, sometimes one in five students in grade one had been in a private placement or somewhere else the year prior. Since we've adopted the full-day K program, those numbers are now down in the single digits. And so I think we can expect to see less of a dramatic difference uh, between kindergarten and first grade enrollment. That's that, you know, that, that's a three-year trend at this point, um, that corresponds mainly with the advent of full-day K for all kids when Beal opened. Um, this is the grade one enrollment by school, just a a quick look at a table um, that shows the the numbers and how they've evolved. And of course, there was a big change when Beal opened in twenty twenty-one, uh, but you can see those numbers there fluctuate a bit. And in the smaller schools, you're going to see sometimes a little bit bigger swings. We had forty-five uh, student, or fifty students last year rather, at uh, Spring Street, but we had nine more this year um, in first grade, so you may have some, some differences. We're down a little bit at Patton compared to where we were a couple of years ago, we were fifty-seven, uh, this year we're at forty-five. So, you know, we we continue to monitor those and looking what what the enrollment is at that key grade. Just still love showing this slide where we went to a hundred percent for pre-K after many years of not having that. So again, that was an important change we made, an investment. Uh, this is preschool, again, we tend to be about two hundred students, the twenty and twenty-one are a little bit different because of COVID and coming out of COVID in the hybrid year, uh, so this is uh, uh, more typical of what we see at this time of year. Uh, Beal School, uh, you know, two hundred and fifty-one kids, that's when it was in the old Beal. Twenty twenty-one, we opened with five hundred and eighty-three students, we're up to six hundred and twenty-four. We expected, based on the demographers' report, that we were going to gain uh, student pop- We expected, based on the demographers report, that we were going to gain student population in the Beal district as some different housing came online. There's some additional apartments will be coming online over the course of this school year where we'll draw some students. It'll remain, you'll see now what that impact is, but that has been slowly growing since the, since the school opened. We're now at 624 students. Coolidge, of course, dropped considerably when Beal opened and it's a pretty similar number to last year, 288 this year. Floral Street has been holding pretty steady, a little bit of a drawdown this year to 525 from five, the peak of 544 since Beal opened. But about, you know, similar number of students. Patton has dropped a bit. We've seen that as a trend at Patton in terms of the numbers coming down. We opened with 312 of the year Beal opened and we're now down to 269. And it will be, again, something we have to monitor to see if it's settling in at that number or if we start to see some, some changes in the coming years. Spring Street, you know, down a little bit last year, back up to 305 this year, similar to where it was two years ago. So it's, it's a pretty consistent number, but again, year to year, that can change depending on different grade cohorts. Sherwood's been pretty consistent at about 950 students. We're right at that number this year. And Oak is actually at its lowest number in the past five years, pretty significantly different from the 985 peak in 2020. Next year, they will get that larger 490-student current sixth-grade class, but it's right over, a little over 900 students at this point. And for the high school, again, holding steady at about the same number we were last year. And that's a number, there'll be a separate class size report from the high school at your next meeting that will highlight some of the issues that the, application to the MSBA for an addition, why we've done that. So that, you know, the numbers are not changing. They're consistent with what we expect in terms of the number of students. It's well over the design capacity, which was originally about 1375, I think. And then, you know, sort of modern with, with current expectations and standards at the state level, our design capacity is really about 1,250. So significantly overcrowded at the high school. This is our out-of-district special education placement numbers for October 1st. We're at 56 students. You recall last spring that we knew that we were going to have some significant increases in students who needed to access out-of-district placements. That number 56 does not include the 22 students who in prior years before 2022 would have accessed a program elsewhere. And now we're educating those students within the district. So that's a, that's a one-year, pretty significant increase and that's something that we obviously continue to monitor. And we know it's a volatile area depending on different student needs and potentially moving in, moving out of the district. Those are things that Ms. Belcito and Ms. Bartlett and Mr. Girardi are monitoring on an ongoing basis. In terms of vocational technical school, this is the story we've been telling for a few years. From 113 students at Assabette back in 2020 to only 22 this year. And that's why we put so much emphasis on building programming at Shrewsbury High School. There'll be some additional conversation about some potential different options coming up at your next meeting. And, but again, that number is unfortunate because we took a lot of pride in making sure kids who wanted to access vocational technical high school education had that access. But the, the policy changes have not been allowing for that. So at this point, only 22 Shrewsbury students remaining at Assabette this year. This is a demographic change we've been seeing for a number of years. We had a significant increase last year of English learners. The, the number has grown again in terms of an apples-to-apples comparison in our kindergarten through grade 12 numbers. Right now, we have about 331, so it's about a 32, it's a 32-student increase over last year, still significant. The number 369, the Department of Education did change its process to, they want identification of preschool students in the fall now. So there are 38 preschool students at Parker Road across our preschool program who qualify as English learners as well for a total of 369 across pre-K through 12. Our special education number of students with IEPs, snapshot in time on October 1st, very consistent with what we've seen the past few years. And then a quick few slides about class size guidelines. These are the, the school committee's policy guidelines around class size. 17 to 19 students in K, 20 to 22 in the primary grades of one and two, 22 to 24 students in grades three through eight. And then grades nine through 12, 18 to 20 students in a typical class, not including some of the larger programs with numbers that we consider to be over-enrolled traditionally listed there as well. You can see from the color coding of this chart, we remain in a really strong place with our kindergarten class sizes. Whereas back to 2019, we had, we were purposely running a lot of those high to get more kids into full day where we could. But still, class size is overall higher than we would have liked in the last several years. It's the first year in a while we actually have one, we had a few more move-ins of spring kindergarten than we expected, but we're right, I think it's 19.7 or something as an average, so just a little bit over the guideline, but otherwise, well within. As far as our primary grades, grades one and two, this year, we do not have any classes that are above the school committee guidelines. Again, the space we were able to gain with Beal and the ability to staff our schools through the more recent override helps us maintain those class sizes at a very good number for us. And then for grades three and four, again, several years in a row where we have not had any that are beyond that 22 to 24 guideline, most well below that. At the middle school, you know, we've, we've often had been one or two kids above the, the class sizes. Last year was the first year in a long time we had none of them. This year, that grade six class, which is a little higher, that 490-student class, we're at an average of 25, just one beyond the, the upper part of the guideline. So at this point, I'd be happy to take any questions the committee has about our October 1st data. And again, the high school report will come at a subsequent meeting.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Okay. Very well. Thank you for the report. All right. Next item on the agenda is under new business, is a vote on the superintendent's goals. Each year, the superintendent of schools presents performance goals to the school committee as part of the evaluation process. Consistent with the evaluation process mandated by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Dr. Sawyer will present his proposed goals for the, for the committee's review and approval. A memo was enclosed to us from Dr. Sawyer. Walk us through.
Thank you. Sure. So there is a memo in your packet. And, you know, I guess, start by saying that, again, I appreciate the process we've gone through the last few years in terms of our strategic goal process and ultimately, I'm responsible for making sure the district moves forward and achieves those goals to the greatest extent we can. But I have pulled, you know, the professional practice goal and a student learning goal out of those district-level goals to, for areas of focus for me in addition, or particularly this year. The first around the student learning SMART goal, I am proposing that, that be connected to leading a process around a, a study group that looks at the use of artificial intelligence or AI as a tool in the district, both educationally for students as well as as a tool for educators and staff. There's a variety of, this is an issue that I know I'm seeing come across my desk more and more and just in terms of articles or reports on how this is affecting education in a variety of ways. And while we certainly have had things that are happening out in the field, I think it's important this year that we have a coordinated effort to, to sort of get a framework around what we're doing with AI. What's okay, what's not okay? What are the issues relative to how AI, how might be preparing our students? You heard our seniors earlier about things they're thinking about studying or looking forward to in the future. You know, and, you know, there, you're not going to be looking at a career that AI is not going to influence in some way. So what does that look like in terms of us preparing them for higher education and beyond? What are the tools that can support student learning? There are elements that we see right now, whether that's our ST math program at the elementary level, different tutoring opportunities. There, there's a lot happening in that space. You know, what, what is our approach and what does that mean? Or what could we look ahead to when we think about the, the potential use of AI around supporting student learning? How can they help staff do their job? Seen a couple of different things about potential for assisting and making lesson planning effective, perhaps in, in applying different kinds of best practices in ways that help teachers do that in a more efficient way perhaps, or maybe to differentiate or scaffold in, in different ways. Then there's just the whole data piece in terms of, you know, guardrails around data. If we're using AI, what's okay to put into, plug into an AI tool? What do we say is okay as a district? Where are we concerned about making sure student and staff data is protected? And then finally, and this is one that's probably been in the news more in the last couple of years, is, you know, what about academic integrity? What about students and using artificial intelligence in ways that, you know, to put it bluntly, would be considered to be cheating? Or, you know, what, and where is that gray area perhaps where, I know, you know, you see ad for these kinds of things all the time. Tools that help you with your writing. It might make you, help you make a better word choice or help you tighten something up. Where is that okay to use those kinds of tools? Where is it not? I know our teachers are grappling with that in different ways and, and I think are doing really good work. But again, making sure that we have a, a, a framework around what's acceptable and what's not, so people understand the rules of the road. So, you know, working with, putting together hopefully a team of some terrific people to help investigate those things and do some reporting out on that is something I think would be of interest and of value to the district. So that's the, the, kind of the student learning goal, the professional practice goal I'm proposing. We have a variety of areas that we know we're going to be soliciting feedback from different stakeholders over the course of the year. Previous meeting, we talked about getting some feedback around our bullying and intervention, prevention intervention policy and plan, the AI that I just mentioned. Certainly, where's a big focus this year in our goals about student behavior and discipline practices and how we can continue to strengthen those. How can we assess the effectiveness of those things and get feedback on how that's going? And then ultimately, every so often, I solicit input from the different stakeholders about my own performance. I would like to, my goal is to utilize the thought exchange platform that we have access to that's been evolving in some of the tools that it has to try to do, be as effective and efficient with that kind of approach to gathering feedback. And ultimately, have that feedback be helpful to the school committee and to the leadership team and to, to all of us in the district in terms of advancing some of our strategic goals. So those are the, the two areas in addition to the full strategic goals and action steps that I'm responsible for. And be happy to have any feedback or, or questions from the committee and as far as those areas of focus for this year.
Great. Thank you so much. Colleagues, questions, comments? I'm Ms. Saffron.
Yeah, Mr. Winchey, maybe I can start us off. This is an important one because of course, sort of we're, I, I recognize we're into October, but we're kind of trying to set the, we've been refining the strategic goals for the year for the district and then we lean, lean into the superintendent's goals. So, thank you, Dr. Sawyer, for spending the time putting these together. And I think, as I, as I think about these and I think about sort of what's most important, I'm trying to make sure that the goals for the leader of the district align to the goals and the strategic plan that we have for this year. And I think I'm in a space where, while I appreciate there's a lot of work to do in the AI space and recognizing, as I joked with Dr. Sawyer on a call, like, my, my brother teaches artificial intelligence. I think it's important in education settings, right? I think there's a lot of opportunity there and there's a lot of risk. And so I appreciate the need for some sort of study group or working group or whether it's beginning with faculty and encompassing other areas because there's, there's certainly a lot of learning opportunity for children as, as well. I think the one is I've been thinking more about it, colleagues and, and Dr. Sawyer is on the professional practice space. I'm, I'm still feeling like, like a strong need for us as a district to be focusing on communication maybe a little bit more broadly, where I think that surveys are one tool. I frankly am a little worried about survey fatigue, that we survey a lot. And some of our jobs sometimes is to not always do what's popular, but to make some hard choices. And so I want to balance when we ask people for feedback and we hear feedback, that's important. And what are the right tools to do that, Dr. Sawyer? But I'm also thinking about the things that I'm hearing on the sidelines of the soccer field about what is parents' square and how's that working? And is that, is, is the, is that, is that the, the fix we were sort of hoping it might be? And so I'm, my ideas are not as formed as I had wanted them to be, but I'm also not quite sure we've, we've hit it on the, on surveys as the, as one means where I'm thinking a little bit more about our communicating. We are a big organization. You have a difficult job. And I'm just trying to think about the thousands of families that I want to make sure we're communicating with as well and as clearly. And the hundreds upon hundreds of staff who I have heard from some of those informally, like, they get a lot too, coming at them every, every day. And so I'm curious to hear what my, my colleagues are thinking, but I know, Dr. Sawyer, I had mentioned to you, I'm kind of thinking about the survey piece of sort of a, is that, is that quite right or is that quite sufficient when we know that we have a lot going on? I think about the literacy work we just heard about or, you know, where we are with CTE. And there's so much that we're doing and how well are we communicating it out is sort of the thing I'm pondering about. So I'm, I'm certainly curious for the thoughts of, of others and certainly, Dr. Sawyer, you as well.
And when I talked to Dr. Sawyer today, I had a similar conversation around. I think, I think survey fatigue is a real thing, but I also think people are getting used to more surveys because there's QR codes everywhere and it's easier to gather information that way. But I also think real-time discussion is helpful with families and staff especially. And I know Dr. Sawyer has a very busy schedule, so I think there's also an issue with having the availability to do it in other ways. But I would encourage you to do that, to have more in-person meetings or even Zoom meetings with a group of people that you can, you know, get a lot of information from. You've got the chat on the side. We do that a lot in private business now because it's, it's just an easier tool for us to gather information and not have to, everybody be in the same place at the same time. So I think I would encourage the surveys because that's going to give us feedback that we can use to put into our work and your work, but also having more personal interactions with staff and families. Time, you know, but I do understand that there's a lot of time already being taken up with a lot of other important things.
I do, with, I do like the student learning goal of AI because that is such a current thing, good or bad. So I guess with professional, the professional's practice goal, maybe there can be a combination of the thought exchange and the communication. Because as we were just talking about with literacy, being able to get out that information to families so they understand what is going on and that they know steps the process instead of just listening to us at a meeting or whatnot. So I guess maybe for the professional practice, maybe it could be a combination of communication with that surveying, thought exchange. We could broaden that maybe?
I'm also supportive of the student learning goals surrounding artificial intelligence. I was part of a, a smaller group at the all-school council meeting involving high school parents. And this was a, I think dominated our discussion was AI and kind of both on parent input and also faculty as to how we're going to approach this as a district. So I think that the time is definitely right to address that. With regard to the thought exchange and communication, I agree with Ms. Riefapoor. If there's some way we could maybe merge the two, that might be helpful to try to address both. I do think thought exchange has been a valuable tool for the district and some of the surveying we've done. It's a great way to get feedback from different stakeholders. And I think there's, you know, my understanding is there's more there that can be utilized and maybe in a, you know, to be more efficient with it and get more out of it since we are, you know, paying for it and, but also to maybe dress communication in a broader way as well.
Yeah, I'm supportive of the goals, especially around AI. This technology is moving fast. And I think we need to get ahead of it, at least to get some foundational understanding of how to apply it, how, how staff and students should use it. In terms of communication, I, I like the thought exchange survey approach. I do encourage, you know, if there are other outlets that we could pursue, I think the Zoom meeting suggestion is, is, I feel like we've seen that, like maybe coming out of COVID, we had some really good engagement around certain seminars that we offered virtually. I think, you know, in the comments section can be, there can be a lot of good feedback for people that are not comfortable maybe speaking up during those meetings. So, yeah, just my thoughts on that. Any other comments?
Well, I mean, it sounds like there's general support for the, the artificial intelligence goal. The other one, it looks like I need to go back to the drawing board, so I'll do that and bring that back to the next meeting for some review and approval. Does that, would that work for you?
That absolutely works.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So yeah, we'll talk at the next meeting on that. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. The minutes from school committee meeting held on September 25th has been provided. Any edits or revisions?
No, no.
There being none, they'll be approved as written. And we do need to go into executive session tonight. Therefore, I need a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, purpose seven, open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 22F and G, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and or releasing executive session minutes. And B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and share so declare. Purpose three, the Shrewsbury Education Association, Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, and/or the Cafeteria Workers Association. And C, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 21A2, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, non-union clerical and support staff and/or administrators. Purpose two, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. You have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote is required. Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Ms. Burchett?
Aye.
Ms. Rifafoor?
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, thank you, and good night.